Just note, should I?
Yes.
All right. Okay. We would like to welcome everyone to the October eighteen two thousand twenty-three. Planning Commission work session. We we don't have anticipation of a business session today, but we have a couple of items to to cover in the work session. As many of you know, and for the public that may be listening, there has been some discussion of pickleball, and I think this is unique to our municipality, our state. The pickleball is going throughout the country, and so we're when we say pickleball court ordinance, I think it sounds nefarious that we're gonna like. I I joke for the city council that we're working on ending pickleball in the city of Comwood Heights, which absolutely is not the case. I'm a fan as a physical therapist. I love it. I think it's a fantastic way to get exercise, but we're trying to figure out some ways where what you do on your property isn't going to harm the people around you. So we'll have a discussion. The staff have been, you know, working on that, and this is will be discussion. We're not necessarily expecting to complete the discussion today, and so we are. We are not taking public comment today as well. So if anybody's here for public comment that will happen at a future date. So but I do think there's it's helpful to be aware of what these discussions are about to make sure that you're updated and educated.
Office note really quick. We did receive a couple of public comments just emailed over to staff.
Oh, great.
About the pickleball item.
Perfect.
Uh, we just responded to those, excuse me, individuals and let them know they'll be sent to the commission before the next public hearing.
Okay.
But because work sessions don't contain the public hearing, our policy is to kind of give those at the next opportunity. So we'll be forwarding those to the commission. In general, they were in support of like reasonable regulations to mitigate the impact. So.
That that's really helpful.
And then, uh, will you turn on that one table mic right there in front of you? Commissioner Smith, this, uh, sorry. Yeah, there's so many different things in here. Perfect. Okay.
And then, um, the, uh, there's a there are two different things happening. The staff are not sitting around doing nothing. I mean, it's been a busy time between trying to get the transportation master plan that we finished up in front of the city council, and they got their their kind of first bite at the apple a little bit last night, and then working on the town center and the general plan, and I I think there are other things as well. I'm looking forward to the update there. So beyond that, those are the main two topic items I'm anticipating that we're discussing tonight. Are there other things that we we don't have need to have? Like, I don't want us to just fill time, but it's unique for us to be able to have some discussion as well. So are there other other things that are burning on your minds that you want to make sure that we get on the agenda or on future agendas? You can think about that and, you know, share that with me and the staff if you'd like some future items too. Yeah.
I will note, Commissioner Paulson just emailed. He's just having a little bit of difficulty joining the Zoom, so I may step out to kind of help him troubleshoot.
Great.
But before I do that, did just want to remind everybody, um, keep reading the form-based code draft
Yeah.
that was shared at the last October meeting. We anticipate coming back to the November first meeting with the consultant to talk about your feedback and findings. So persevere, make it through the draft if you can. We really, um, hope that you'll have some good feedback for us so that we can kind of figure out next steps in the new year for that project.
You want us to? I did have a question about that.
Oh, great.
You want us to make note in the shared document questions, or do you want us to keep those?
I'm so glad you reminded me to say this. However, you want to do it. So one suggestion I did have was if you have been keeping note of your comments and can send those to staff ahead of time.
Okay.
That just may allow us to be able to kind of group them by theme and like address them more efficiently on the first.
Okay.
But if if not, no big deal. However, you want to log it, bring it, send it in advance. It's great. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, we'll turn it over to staff.
Okay, we're still planning to keep this around an hour. Probably forty minutes or so on sport core pickleball, and then I have quite a few city project updates, so I assume there may be questions about some of those. So it's twenty twenty-five minutes on that. We discussed, we introduced a a kind of preliminary draft ordinance regarding sports courts at the last work session. There are a lot of questions, a lot of comments, uh, concerns expressed. So we're going to take half a step back, and this is just a presentation format. I'll go quickly through the background of how why we're considering this this ordinance again. There's some some research we prepared and and some kind of different articles and sources that we've gotten data from that aren't in here specifically, but the the findings from them are, and we can send out those sources to the commission after the meeting. Um, and then just some ideas, you know, our proposal and our recommendation and why we made that, and then some other ideas that we want to discuss. And I think where there are so many opinions about this and people coming out of so many angles, what I think would be helpful is for the commission to to give staff a list of concerns or comments or feedback preliminarily before we're at a draft level. And I think it may be helpful for us to take that to a city council workshop then as well and say, council, here's where the planning mission generally is. Is this the direction you agree with? If not, we can kind of take feedback back and forth or look at a joint work session or something like that. So this might jump back and forth a few times before it comes to a draft, you know, public hearing with the planning commission.
That would be a great topic if the council is up for doing a joint session like we did last year. So I mean.
Yeah.
I think we could. That might accelerate things.
Yeah, something to think about, but but there's a little bit of runway here before we get to, you know, formal consideration. So background here, the city council issued a moratorium on sport courts over five hundred square feet. Due to perceived unique impacts of residential pickleball courts and five hundred square feet, less than that is not really the size of pickleball court. That's going to cover your tennis courts, pickleball, you know, larger sport courts that that could create noise or lighting impacts. Uh, the moratoriums, land use moratoriums are effective for up to six months. If no decision is made within six months, the moratorium just lifts. I mean, we can't keep considering an ordinance, but that moratorium is only valid for six months. Staff was instructed to research and draft an ordinance, uh, regulating residential pickleball courts. That was the the thing that kind of sparked this whole discussion was a residential pickleball court constructed in a neighborhood. So so the direction and feedback was, hey, look at some some quick accessible regulations specifically for pickleball. Just some comparisons comparing impacts of the noise and the pitch of of a residential pickleball court. Again, this is from some of the sources we we pulled from online articles and other places. Compared to other sport courts, pickleball generally produces sounds at a louder level. Seventy decibels at a hundred foot distance. That statistic varies. Some some sources say it's a hundred fifty feet, some are two hundred, some are one hundred. And, you know, that that decibel level, you know, we've read fifty-five and sixty-five and seventy and eighty. So the the numbers are kind of all over the place, but in the general category of seventy decibels at a hundred foot distance. Similar similar, um, volume wise to a vacuum cleaner freeway traffic or loud appliances. Obviously, the context is a little different. A vacuum cleaner is running consistently. A pickleball court is, you know, the the sound and the the pattern of the sound is different.
Do you have an idea where a rod mower, the power rod mower would be?
I actually bought a sound meter because you can get one on Amazon for twenty-nine ninety-nine, and it will be delivered in your house within three to five hours. I thought, wow, thirty bucks. I was like, I was fascinated. So I'm like, all right, I'll buy it. So I actually, uh, went around my neighborhood, uh, Sunday afternoon and found that, um, a pool party with a bunch of neighborhood kids, uh, way over seventy, um, kids playing basketball in their front yard from the adjacent front door of the next house over seventy, uh, people having a family gathering on a Sunday evening over seventy as well.
Sure.
Three other uses that
Right, yeah.
have traditionally been allowed uses that were happening on a Sunday afternoon.
Uh, the other, uh, we we did compare it to tennis, which is forty decibels at a hundred feet. The softer ball, you know, kind of different, you know, more distance, so the the noise is is quieter than that. This is not considering the the people playing the sports. This is just the racket to to ball. And then we talk about the the pitch, uh, which is another consideration, um, and that's kind of the you know, the frequency of the sound. It's a it's a higher pitch than some of those other, um, noises that we hear. Uh, you know, reverse lights on a truck, uh, alarm systems, you you know, dropping something hard on a hard surface, those kind of things. So it's kind of a an obnoxious pitch level at one point two thousand hertz. I'm going to touch on this quickly. This won't be the focus of the conversation today, but some of the other concerns that have been heard are or expressed are lighting and fencing. What we found with some of the pickleball courts that, um, that were brought to the attention of city code enforcement and installing lights is the lights didn't meet the city's outdoor lighting code as it was. To to properly light a pickleball court following, you know, the USA pickleball standards, that that lighting is really bright and 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 floods an area and actually doesn't meet our current outdoor lighting ordinance.
Would you say that's different from other sports courts?
Not necessarily, but but we would apply the current lighting standards to anything. So if a basketball court built a bright floodlight today, we and and someone called about it, same violation. Yep. Because the the height of the light structures is limited in our code, and the temperature of the lights is is warmer than typically, uh, what's recommended for a sport court or pickleball specifically. It it, you know, it's that fluorescent really kind of blue LED color temperature, and then the brightness obviously can be an issue. And then we have, um, we have fencing standards as well that that seem to do a fairly good job at either making sure taller fences are set back off property lines, or if they're on property lines, it goes through the proper process to be approved. So we haven't seen a ton of of actual issues with fencing, the concerns with lighting, I believe, as staff is regulated pretty well through the outdoor lighting ordinance, if people have followed that. So the concerns we've seen there are due to The outdoor lighting ordinance, if people have followed that. So the concerns we've seen there are due to illegal. Light structures that are built without permits. So that leaves us at noise as the main concern and, and, and even. Given the concerns we heard about lighting and fencing, noise far outweighed the rest.
I'm fencing. One last question.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't remember when we did the, the. When we were talking about it relative to, to sport courts, but we didn't talk about. Absorbent versus reflective. At the time, because we were talking about noise.
Mm-hmm.
Um. As we talk about that, that might be a consideration and then also um. Uh. Trees or other natural shrubbery. The data there is about.
There's a little information in here.
Good, okay, I'll wait.
I'm just gonna start being a nuisance now.
That's fine, yeah, we won't hurt that.
But. It's interesting that you would say that lighting and fencing are well handled. When the noise ordinance that exists. Is similarly restrictive. To these two ordinances.
Sure.
You, you, would you disagree that the current countywide north noise ordinance? Is not effective against the, the noise situation that you highlighted in the previous slide?
Probably. Um, the, the concern now is a, a sport court that's a certain size. It can be right on property lines. So zero feet away from property. We don't have any regulations about sport courts. So that's, that's the concern now. Yeah, noise, there are noise ordinances in place. That can be a nuisance issue that can be enforced. Um, you know, lighting standard, fencing standard. Standard for people holding commercial events in residential areas. That's a, a home business activity that needs to be properly licensed. So we do have things in place for that. I will just, anecdotally, I don't, our department does not do direct enforcement. Enforcing noise complaints is, is. Has been a little more burdensome than having. A specific city ordinance that says, here's lighting standards, here's fencing standards. The code enforcement officer goes and.
Is that because the standard is not the city's standard, but the county's? Is that the?
It's adopted by reference to Salt Lake County and yeah, I, I, I don't want to venture a guess as to why, but, but.
You'd think it would be similar to lighting.
I think part of it also can be kind of like the nebulous nature of perceiving noise and with a setback, it's. Fairly easily like measured, but I think that sometimes. You've also just misreported where people are like, this must be over this threshold and it's. You don't have the, the nifty tool, you don't really know. And so having some easier to identify standards for non-compliance could, could be helpful.
Some things in the lighting ordinance are similar though, where you have to actually measure it to determine if it's a violation.
One other difference is usually lighting and fencing issues are caught during construction. And you stop the work and you tear the, the lighting or fencing out or you get your permit and you move on.
Yeah.
Noise is a perpetual. It's an ongoing thing and, and the code enforcement process here is a. Criminal citation process. So it, you know, if it escalates and, and repeat issues occur, it goes through the court system, takes forever.
You guys may have already covered this too when I stepped out to. Talk to Commissioner Paulson. So if you did, you just cut me off, but one thing we were talking about. As well, uh, if, if we were to say we're going to, you know, just default to that noise ordinance. It seems from the research we've done. Pretty difficult to actually meet that ordinance unless you're generously setback from the property line. And so we had a concern over saying. You can put it virtually anywhere as long as it meets the ordinance and people doing it and then not being able to meet that. We, we felt like what's. I guess in simple language, what's the point of allowing people to put it anywhere if putting it there is going to violate that noise ordinance and we know that.
What, but that assumes that you know the equipment they'll use to play the game.
Yeah.
And you don't.
Yes, but it seems that there's. Industry consensus nearly on unless it's in this range of far away. You're going to have a really.
If you use the wrong equipment, but if you use the right equipment.
Yeah, but nobody competitively will use that softer equipment. I mean, I'm sure they will. Like, you're not gonna, you're not gonna go to a tournament and find, I mean, the standard ball that they're going to take to a tournament is not a softer ball.
But you're not playing a tournament in the backyard either, so.
Yeah, but, but the people that are playing competitively, like in, in my neighborhood. I've asked and they want nothing to do with the softer ball. They, these are people that want to. Go compete at the senior games and crack team with that ball will throw their game off.
For what it's worth, again, just as a staff perspective to consider, I also am reticent to rely on the equipment just because that's so hard to enforce. It's like. Seems like another piece that we would have to be kind of dealing with on an ongoing basis. Um, whereas if it's more at construction, what's being built, that gives us a, a better ability to. Be kind of plugged into it and regulate it than if somebody today is going to choose to take different equipment out and go. Do it, but. Just one perspective to consider.
Can I share that same concern about sound? Some of its volume. So for example, like there, there are regulations regarding trains going past houses. Uh, because trains always exceed the seventy decibels and on throughout the country. But the way that the, the way that that's handled is it's the frequency that those trains go by and frankly, they're. Down to the level of how many, how many engines are there on the train? How many cars are there? So what's the, what's the volume over time that somebody is exposed to that? And I think that the, the comparisons with pickleball, there are places in the city where people. Whether individually or in certain areas are playing from. Early morning until eleven or twelve. And then they're playing again in the evening and it's really, really frequent. This isn't like somebody's like shooting hoops in their front yard with their kid, you know, a couple nights a week. This is like. There are hours and hours and hours and I don't, I don't.
I think that if we, if, if, if we have to assume that's going to happen because we can't say, oh, you can only play for. Forty-five minutes a day.
Exactly my point.
And, and so I think, I, do you want to, do you want to go through your presentation?
Sure, yeah.
Good.
I, I mean.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's a.
Ju- just a few more things. Again, based on the, and we'll send the, the studies out, but quiet paddles and balls. They do reduce, reduce noise, but the, the information we found is that they don't reduce it very much. If there's more information available, please send that to us. Happy to look at it. Um, structures and acoustic wraps, so like sound mitigating panels on fencing. Has an effect as well, you know, thirty-two decibels is, is pretty good. Um, so that's, that's something to look at. Um, and, and you'll remember in the initial proposal, we had a. A suggestion in there that if you do a sound study, you can reduce that setback. Um, you know, that it could be something to take into account there. Vegetation. Certainly can reduce noise, but it's very. Context sensitive. It, it depends on what kind of vegetation you have. The season of the year, if there's, you know.
The maturity or not.
Yeah, whether, yeah. Or to be effective, it'll be.
The number I saw was a maximum ten decibel reduction. Like if they, if somebody was trying to grow something and that was like. I mean, if you're trying to appease your neighbors and ask for an exception. And they put a bunch of stuff in there. I mean, the maximum benefit, I would say, if we were to include that if. Would be ten decibels.
So then, yeah, two other ways. If you're looking simply to mitigate noise, uh, maybe not an issue at all. You could put an indoor court, build an indoor court. And distance. Um, and, and there's, you know. There's a lot of information out there that the more distance you have, the less the noise travels to property line. Um, so that's where we landed and that's just kind of the rationale of how we came to be where we were. Based on the direction given. So this is just a reminder of the, the recommendations that were made again based on these findings. Enforce existing fencing ordinance and force existing lighting ordinance. There was a, a provision in there that. Where sport court surfaces themselves are not permitted, that's not a permitted structure or use or, or. You know, whatever you want to call it right now, requiring a building permit for it. Uh, and then again, the distance um. Requirement of a hundred fifty feet from all property lines, which admittedly is, is restrictive when you compare it to single-family lots in the city. Uh, and then allowing for reduction, you know, cutting that in half. If you have mitigation methods vetted through a, an analysis that will get you down to about sixty-five decibel levels. Other options to think about, and this is where I'll leave it and turn it over to you guys and we'll take notes and, and go from there. Um, you, you. One extreme is you, you just prohibit residential pickleball courts in certain zones. And, and we are not saying as staff we support or don't support any of these. These are just ideas. Um, you re- you require neighbor approval. This is a little subjective because neighbor change over time and what one neighbor is good with, the next might not be. However. When you're building a fence on a property line and today if you want to increase the height of that fence above a certain threshold. One of the requirements is you do have to provide neighbor consent. So that's an option. Uh, building permit process, uh, we would recommend that regardless. Um, Commissioner Shelton uh, brought this up at the last meeting, but a, a signed affidavit, just acknowledging basically. Hey, I'm aware of the city's fencing and lighting and noise requirements. And I'll, you know, I'm, I'm aware that if I violate that, I'm subject to enforcement, something like that. That's where there's some concern of if we, if we suspect or know or have a good idea that. Putting a court too close to property lines is going to create a noise issue and, and the neighbor signs that away. Are we? You know, i- is that an issue? So something to talk about there. Quiet equipment requirement. Again, enforceability of this may be tricky, but that's an option or a different setback requirement altogether. Um, there, there's another option and that's recommend no action. You know, maybe it's not a widespread issue. It's not enough of a concern. Lighting and fencing are properly managed by code right now and the commission recommends no action. So. There's some options and, and I'll. Leave it off for you there.
Yeah, what do you guys think?
I just request like fifteen minutes and then I can move on to the next step.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that sounds good.
Well, I, doing the, taking a look at research and like what other cities have done, like I was thinking at Colorado specifically because. Somewhat similar. Um, there's a lot of things about um, huge setbacks and, and I'm, I don't. I, I thought a lot about what you said after our last meeting and, and noise is the issue. The court is not the issue. I mean, the noise is, is the issue, right? So. How do you address, well, and lighting and fencing, but we've got that. So how do you address? The noise. We can require the acoustic baffles that we've talked about, that they have to put up a certain. Height of fence around a pickleball court and then put a, put those acoustic. Things on to reduce the noise. I, I think that's probably. Um, and then these other things that we've talked about. I, I'm, I'm, I'm. And I said this at the last meeting, my concern is that. As a property owner, you have rights to build on your property, but those rights don't extend to making your neighbors' lives miserable. And so how do you balance? Those two things. I mean, how, how do you, how do you balance it? So um, I think that it has to have some. Careful con- consideration and, and think outside the fact of. Whether we do or don't like to play pickleball and whether we do or don't have one in our own yards and feel like what could that be? But I think we have to think about what is. From a property rights and land use perspective, what is the kind of right thing to do to address? And balance both of, both of those things. And I do think since I'm talking, I'm just going to keep going. Um, that we do need some kind of carrot and stick kind of. Thing. I mean, because people who build the pickleball courts, they'll get a violation, they'll pay the whatever. Well, I don't even know what the. Fine or what it might be, and then they just play again. And I, I think it needs to be a little stronger. I think that I, but how, can we ask code enforcement to keep track of, well, these, these people have three violations and so. Restructure out or something. I don't know, but I think, I think it has to be a pretty strong. Message that this is not going to be accepted if you don't follow the guidelines that are established. I think that we have to just. They have to cease and desist if. They're not following the guidelines, so. Um. And the other thing I was going to say is I think we need to add on our, if we do have any kind of regulation that. Any conversion from an existing sport court or tennis court. Needs to follow the same pri- process in terms of. Building permit and if we do an advocate and all those kind of things because. It's the same. They're in the same boat as um, everyone else, so.
The draft right now defines. Think. Been a few weeks since I've been to commission, but. I believe the current draft defines outdoor pickleball court as any surface used for the playing of pickleball court. So. That would help if that logic of somebody says, oh, it's not a pickleball court, it's a basketball court, but you're using it to play pickleball.
Yeah.
Um, so I think there, there is kind of that direction in the drafts, but um, if it's the direction of the commission, we certainly could. Add in a deliberate line that says conversions are subject. So just wanted to add that to your, your conversation.
So how do we address the, how, how, how do you address the noise with? Equipment that it doesn't. Yeah, I mean, there's several things you could do. I, I do think there needs to be a setback. I, I don't think it can be like a sport court where it's, it can be a, on the property line. And. What, what is that? Thirty yards is what we. Have now, a hundred and fifty feet? Is that right? Yeah. Um, I mean, that's. Prohibitive from really. Really anyone.
Yeah, yeah, every, everyone.
I mean, I, I mean, maybe there's some.
Let's clarify. So it's thirty yards to the, to the primary structure adjacent, right?
No, it's to property.
Oh, to property, okay.
Yeah, my, my thought on that, because we had this debate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that structures change and if you measure something to an adjacent structure, what happens when that person knocks down their house? Wants to rebuild their home and then creates a non-conformity.
Yeah.
Where it feels like property lines change less.
Hmm.
Um, I will also say, just looking at the, the impact of the setback, it is, it is certainly prohibitive. It really is. But it's also on the smaller end of the scale of a recommended setback. You know, if you think of Park Cities being six hundred feet.
Yeah.
We tried to do, again, just as a starting point in a draft, the very minimum needed to. Really make an impact. It, it would still enable like wrap centers to have it um, and some. Larger properties or multifamily properties that have kind of a common area. Um, but yeah, it is. I, I was shocked when I started doing the research and it was like, whoa, this really is. Way bigger setback that we're dealing with than what I thought it would be.
Well, I've got the, the circumstance I'm familiar with in my neighborhood. Um, the, the people that live closest to the pickleball or the tennis court that's used for pickleball in my neighborhood. The neighbor. Who was fine with tennis. Knew buying the house that was fine with tennis. And now it is used for pickleball, is a very, very popular place to play pickleball. And um, it's. Some weeks uh, four plus hours. In the morning from, you know, like eight or nine till noon. Um, the, the, I. The woman and she's very, very reasonable. Um, she'll probably come and talk to. Us at some point in the city as well. She's very articulate. She says, listen, I, I mean. And she's talking about friends in the neighborhood that are, that are the ones that are playing and. She says she measured it from her, from her back door to the edge of the pickleball court is a hundred and ten feet. And through very high-end triple-pane glass windows. While she's doing the dishes, the morning dishes. All she can hear is pop, 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 pop. Through everything shut. And that's what trees blocking. Between her and there, so. That's, that's at a hundred and ten feet. Just, that's an anecdote. So that's not science. That's just one person's lived experience and. So. What that's worth.
If you want to clarify, we're not trying to say no noise.
No.
They, they make noise. It's just unacceptable.
Yeah. Like I said, she was okay at forty decibels.
Interesting to me. I didn't under, because I, you know, I kind of chuckled when this first came up, but. Um, that it is a pitch, right?
Yes.
That it's, that it's a different. Kind of sound.
Yes.
But I mean, in, in looking at these items and, you know. Allowing people to do what they want on their property, balancing that with all these items, you know, so few of them seem. Forcible.
Sure.
And. You know, I, I, I'm wondering, you know, when you look at a structure that. What, what, what were they called? An insulating, it's a, a barrier?
Oh, yeah.
What do they call it?
It's an absorptive. Barrier.
I mean, is maybe the, maybe the easily enforced. Version of this. Is a setback or. Acoustic wrap. These are, you, you're options. You have to have one or the other.
Sure.
And that just seems the way, the way to make it sensible. At scale for an entire city.
My um, suggestion, if the commission goes in their direction of maybe. Considering an acoustic wrap as an option would be to require a noise study with it. Just in the research we were doing, apparently they're often really poorly installed and then don't actually do anything.
Hmm.
So I think it would be good to consider like, if you go that direction, some sort of metric to verify they're installed correctly, they're working. Uh, it, it just, the anecdotes online appear to have a lot of. Misinstallation.
Well, and both of these items add expense, right?
Yeah.
Or expense or, you know. Disallow, right? If it's a hundred fifty feet, I couldn't get one in my backyard. And, and so this idea of, you know. Is, are there parks where the city could consider installing more pickleball courts? You know, that sort of. Discussion. Um. But yeah, I mean, I think it has to be, has to be out of that. Gray area where like, oh, you weren't, you were using the soft equipment. What are you talking about?
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. And that, the idea of kind of reinvesting in city facilities to offer it is what I believe Park City did. Talking to, we met with one of their planners and they said, you know, I was kind of like, I'm a gog that it's six hundred feet. That is. Huge. And they said, yeah, we know, but that, that was what we found worked for us. In turn, we've tried to reinvest in converting. You know, underused facilities in our city parks. That was my understanding at least of. One direction they went.
Can you share with the commission kind of the, you remember the decision-making with the pickleball courts by the rec center? Next to the fence versus not, versus where they currently are? Do you remember that discussion?
Wanted to have more of them in the.
They, they wanted to have them closer to the property line because there's all this extra space.
Yeah.
The residents absolutely lost their minds and they did not want them any closer, they, we would have ended up with double the number of pickleball courts, but. The adjacent residents, then the other example I was aware of was that at Anzac, there was a desire to put pickleball there as well and. The adjacent residents were very, very vocal about that, so it's not, this, this is not just a one-time thing. There are other times that people have been vocal about this, so.
I, I think your example of the rec center is not accurate.
Okay.
Um, the one at Anzac Park is accurate.
Okay.
So.
That, that, that was from Mike Peterson, so he may be up in the night about what he's quoting.
So, do you remember?
They were building two phases, so three of them.
Be kind of interesting to look back at this record. We could find out in middle school, right, and it was all kind of in that same era.
Sure.
Maybe apocryphal, I have no idea, second hand.
All right, well, let me. I'm a pickleball player.
Yeah.
I spent a fair amount of time playing pickleball, so. But I hope that doesn't.
I play it too, I'm just really bad at it, so I can't speak on that.
Um, to me, the challenge is that you are, you pick out a function, not a problem. And you, you say, I, I'm in the ban something of a particular name. Uh, which, I shouldn't say ban it, you're going to prohibit people from building a court to play something of a particular name. And a- at the same time, I, I think it's a slippery slope because what you're saying is. We're just gonna pick off names as they are unpopular, so. Uh, if we were talking about dogs and saying, we're gonna prohibit you having a dog unless you can confine it. In a hundred and fifty-foot setback. People would go crazy. They'd go nuts. If we said, we're gonna prohibit you mowing your lawn unless your lawn is a hundred and fifty feet from your property line. People would go crazy. But both of those things have the same characteristics as what we're talking about here. They're both too loud, they're both too high-pitched. Uh, so I just think. Go ahead.
Well, I, the lawnmower one, I, I, you can have that as an example, but. Uh, because you have to mow your yard, right? I mean, you, but you don't have to have a dog and you don't have to play pickleball.
Right.
And so.
You don't have to mow your lawn, you don't have to have a lawn.
You could get, you could get the same, get ticketed for it, right, that's true. But, but, and we have ordinances in place, noise ordinances to address dog situation. I don't know if you could call, you can't call code enforcement about a lawnmower being too noisy, I don't think, but maybe you could.
So. All falls under the same.
It's a violation of noise, I mean, of the, the noise.
Yeah.
Ordinances, right? And um, so how do we, but I do think pickleball is a little different because it is, it is not. Uh, we have to address it, I mean, we have to address the fact that it, it has to be understood that if you're going to have a pickleball court. There are rules that have to be followed, just like if you're gonna have a dog, you can't leave it outside barking all day long and. You can't have parties in your backyard that are too loud and go on for too long, I mean, there's, there's things in place. That address it, so.
The, 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 the major difference for me here is that we don't try to enumerate those things and prohibit them. Because we think that our, our experience with them is that they'll all be violations. We don't try to enumerate mowing lawns and kids swimming and playing basketball. There's a, there's a whole host of things that you'd have to enumerate if you were just going to attack. Noise that's similar to this noise.
But there, but it's not, I don't think that that high pitch that is also associated with pickleball. Is associated with other things that may like. I don't know how long, how loud the pitch of a dog barking, but, but I mean, the same kind of thing, and, and it's the persistent, it's the persistent. Kind of.
I wanted to add just from, again, the research we've been doing is that noises that have, I think, what they call like an insistent. Or recurring nature of that, like. Are found to be more detrimental, detrimental to health and more of a nuisance. Um, so that's just another thing to consider where maybe some of those other, albeit noisy things that happen are more. Um, kind of ancillary or occasional, maybe you mow your lawn once a week. Hopefully with the, with the exception of people who just don't take care of their animals, hopefully your dog's not barking every day outside all the time. When you're, and the dog's out there. Just another point from the research.
Our, our code enforcement doesn't enforce if the dog is barking, I mean, there is a little bit of a, and I don't know how much is enough. But I mean, like in my neighborhood during, and I don't, I don't hear it from my house, but the description is when it's twenty hours a week, that's different than when it's like. Two or three hours a week, so there's a part of me that wonders, you know, if you're talking about somebody's private residence, I, I don't. I mean, maybe if you're hardcore and you're having people over a lot, I, and I don't know how we come up with a threshold though, because again, we're, we're getting into use discussions here. But the, the total volume is, is an issue, because I mean, if, if, I don't think most people would call. Code enforcement on their neighbors if their dog goes out and is barking for ten or fifteen minutes once a day when it's out in the morning. But the dog is outside for ten hours a day, barking non-stop. People are calling in Cottonwood Heights and they're getting written up for that, so, but I, I don't know what the threshold is for that.
Uh, it's interesting, though, you wouldn't, you wouldn't think, at least we never have thought, to my knowledge, to say. If you're gonna have a dog kennel, you can't have it on the property line. You can today, there's no setback requirements for a dog kennel, so your neighbor could build a dog kennel that's right on your property line. If we said it had to be setback a hundred and fifty feet. Because your dog might bark too loud and you might not be able to do anything about it. That's where I think we are with.
Here, you're saying, but I think the difference is that there's no might about the sound of pickleball. I mean, it is gonna make a, it, it does make sound. I mean, it does, and, and um, and it's, it could be non-stop for twelve hours. Whatever our regulations are from, I can't remember what the hours are, but I mean, it could be non-stop and. I don't even think you as a pickleball lover would like to live next to that.
Well, and just another.
Noise, so.
You took, you have a quick thought is that with some of those other noises, it feels like there's a really obvious remedy that doesn't need regulation, like bring your dog in. The dog's barking. But if the research that we're reading is, is accurate, um, and not reputed, it's what we're seeing is that the way to mitigate. The nuisance of this noise is the distance, like you can't just bring your game into your kitchen, what, what's seen to be recommended is. Is the distance and that being the, the most effective way to mitigate it, so that's. Why it's in there as a starting point, because unless you do the sound study with that barrier installation, which. Yeah, could be a really good option to consider as kind of one path. It seems that, that distance is kind of the way to mitigate it.
Another question, has anyone in Sully County taken that approach?
To doing an ordinance this way?
To, to this kind of setback?
Not for pickleball, that I'm aware, that's kind of one of the challenging parts of this effort is that. It feels like it's kind of building, 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 where I think in the next couple of years, most cities will be working on an ordinance. Yet, the popularity of the sport is relatively new, and so it hasn't been something historically included in our ordinances, so. I'm sure I've never written one before, there's not, there's not a ton of ordinance case studies in the valley to build on. And so in the absence of that.
But you wouldn't say our pickleball problem is unique. It's. All across the county. Looking at an article right here on KSL, noise, lights, crowds, pickleball problems plague neighbors.
There's a couple back in Virginia that went on a hunger strike over.
So, so in terms of recommendations. Mr. Sheldon, what, what would you recommend uh, an approach we take with this? Do we broaden it to not just be pickleball, maybe a sport court? Regulation in general, because it seems like some of your concern is we're singling out pickleball.
Well, my recommendation, first of all, is that you don't pick a, a game of a particular name. Or an activity of a particular name. Uh, if you're gonna build a swimming pool or you're gonna build a, a basketball court or a tennis court. Or a tetherball hole, you know, whatever you're gonna build. Uh, if, if there is a challenge that you create for your neighbors. You should have to remedy that. Uh, you shouldn't be permitted to make a mess for your neighbors, I, I have no argument with that. And if your neighbors are opposed to the sound of pickleball and complain, you should have to stop. Uh, but I think the way there is to not pick on any particular game, but pick on the issue.
Sure.
And if you pick on the issue, you say, uh, uh, first of all, the first thing I would do is say today, one of the challenges is. That none of these outdoor structures or surfaces uh, require permit.
Yeah.
I would require a permit. And as part of that permit process, uh, similar to what we did uh, a couple of weeks ago and we. Allowed a uh, off-site ADU. Detached ADU. We say in that, in that scenario, you can do this. But realize that if you violate the rules, we're helping you here by giving you information, and the information we're gonna give you is. Don't blow it because you might not be able to use this for the function you intended, and if you're gonna, if you're gonna just say. Fine, whatever, you're gonna have to have agreed. That you knew you were gonna pour a quart and not be able to use it.
And I, I don't disagree with that, um, but I think we have to be very clear and be able to say that it's cease and desist. It's not just getting a ticket and then you start playing again and then, you know what I mean, I mean.
You probably have some challenges with law there that you have to sort out, you probably can't do that, you know, if. You issued a building permit, you can't then say you violated the noise ordinance, we're bringing a tractor to dig it out.
Can I just ask a clarifying question so I make sure I kicked on the notes right? Um, in contemplating a permit process required, would you envision that uh, it's just a building permit that goes through staff? Or would you envision it as coming through conditionally used?
A building permit that goes through staff.
I'll make that note.
And, and if I'm understanding what you're saying, the permit is for any sport court, would qualify that.
Any outdoor structure.
Well, there are swimming pools.
The affidavit or whatever document you're signing is for the use of said structure. Understanding that if the way you use it violates X, Y, Z, whatever, you're aware of that.
Yeah, and I, I think the reality of that is it's a courtesy to the, to the builder of such a court to say. We don't want you to go to this great expense.
Right.
And then realize you've blown it.
That was our concern.
And if, if you, if we can prevent you from that, realize that the statistics say some games create more noise than you're permitted. And if you're gonna play those games, you're gonna get shut down.
I'd just leave it there, there's no additional.
Yes.
But to, to leave it there, we have to define that nuisance, right?
It's already defined in county.
The seventy best, but that, that doesn't talk about anything about the number of hours or minutes that this can occur, right? Like, so we've already talked about.
The number of minutes it can occur is zero.
Well, the gate, then you would just ban them out, right?
Oh, you never minutes over the threshold.
I mean, if you're over the threshold and measured over the threshold, you, you are eligible for a ticket.
But that's, but that's the case right now, it's laws. Yeah. Technically, if you're over seventy decibels, i- if there are kids playing in the pool. I have a, I have a unnamed neighbor in my neighborhood that before I got to the neighborhood was written up. Uh, almost weekly, because when their kids were teenagers, they were throwing crazy pool parties, like three to five times a week all summer long. And neighbors called on the repeat, uh, but the pool was completely compliant with the law in terms of how, and now, now that it's, you know. They're older, the kids have moved on, it's a very quietly used.
Mr. Ebler does have his hand up, I know there's a few other items that are on our agenda to get to before six, but just so you're aware.
You guys, you guys okay with putting a pin in things, I mean, I, did you get some?
We've got some options.
Yeah, it's a really tricky issue, I think it's all.
I think you guys are doing a great job.
Would you prefer that we get some council input on this and then bring it back?
I think it'll make, it will be less brain damage for you guys. I mean, I, I appreciate what you did for a year plus with sleds and I would rather shorten that time for you, for your sake and.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Um, but yes, I think Mr. Ebler.
Mr. Ebler?
I mean, I can, I can spend thirty seconds to a minute now, or I could just put a pin in it, your choice.
We would love to hear you just solve the entire problem with one comment.
There you go, um, so I, I've listened to the robust debate and I've kind of gone back and forth on this a lot, um, but I, I, I think that I, I, I did. Um, kind of enjoy some of the options, especially kind of the comparison of uh, the, the height for. Fences and, and having to ask neighbors and whatnot. Um, one bit of caution I would put on in terms of only looking at this as a noise orance issue is like, it's a similar issue to short-term rentals. Of like, we, we can enforce that issue under, under the current laws, but the problem is, is that at some point it does become a nuisance. I, if it becomes, you know, not just a one-time short-term rental, but again and again and again. Um, but the way that the courts look at each ticket is very discreetly, they don't, they don't know and they can't consider that the person has. Ten tickets waiting, waiting to be adjudicated, and the same thing would happen here, so sure, if, if someone is an egregious violator, you could ticket them. And if they did it again, you could ticket them, but i- if, if they go to court, they're just dealing with the single ticket. Um, and, and, and the judge may or may not want to do anything with it. So I, I, I think if we did anything in terms of just looking at this as a noise ordinance, there would have to be some kind of trigger about X number of, of tickets for noise violations. Um, in, in a certain time period. Um, and I think that would probably be a little bit easier in terms of, of, of doing this, but I'm also reticent of just looking at this as a um. Singling out of use, because, you know, if Monica Seles was playing tennis in, in Cottonwood Heights, she, she would be over the. Decibel thing also, so I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty easy to violate, you can download an app on your iPhone and, and do the decibel thing, I've done it before and. You, it's shocking like how much and how many things actually violated, so to just my two cents, I'll put a pin in it.
I got your notes taken down.
Uh, let me just ask one question about that, because it seems like those ideas. About ordinance enforcement are not land use issues. They're, they're outside the scope of what we can do. Or what we can even recommend, honestly, I suppose we can recommend.
Tell, I mean, yes and no, as, you know, as you know, it would be the standard, whatever it is, would be codified by you or black dozens. But then the actual enforcement obviously happens at Crop House and the penalties, I think, are not determined.
Yeah.
By this body or staff.
Well, we can't, for example, say three strikes you're up. We can say you have a permit or not.
When we updated the short-term rental code a year or two ago, we, we reinforced the, the violations section. And that was checked against the maximum, you know, what kind of, of, of violation that's considered. Some sort of level of misdemeanor and repeat violations and penalties and stuff, it's, it's broad though. We can't go in and say it's ten thousand dollar fine if you violate this, it's whatever the court schedule would be for that particular violation.
Well, it sounds like, um, maybe we'll get some additional robust discussion from council. We'll keep figuring it out, it's, it's a hard one, I think it'll continue to be. An issue we hear more about and hopefully we, we find a really successful way to address it and we get to present it at a conference and help all the other communities.
I, I think running towards public comment will be helpful too.
I think so too.
I, 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 I still don't know that we have a full idea of the length and breadth, I mean, we, we're still, our, our sample size of our thirty-two thousand residences. Less than fifty, probably less than twenty.
We'll, we'll keep working on it.
Yeah, so I think what, we'll work towards getting public comment open for everybody, I know there's people in attendance now that I'm sure would appreciate making public comments, so. We'll try to get this to council and get it back and start the public comment process, even if we don't have a full draft ordinance, I think we should open the public comment and start taking that input. Okay, on to, we know. I'm gonna breeze through these, stop me if you have questions, otherwise I'm just gonna, just gonna keep rolling here. Uh, this is just, we're working on things all the time, the planning commission sees land use applications and kind of just specifically land use applications, but so this. We're working on things all the time. The planning commission sees land use applications and kind of just specifically land use applications, but so this is just an overview of. Some things that are going on in the city um that I just wanted to uh. Okay, we're gonna we're gonna roll. Okay, city project updates. Um I think a lot of people are familiar with this one. This is the Town Center redevelopment project, Hillside Plaza. We're we're trying to distance from the branding of Hillside Plaza. I don't know that we want our downtown to be named after an old strip mall, but. That's this project. Um the site master plan contract is in place. The lead consultant is M G B and A. Which is a landscape design firm, and then there's a lot of subconsultants that are architects and public engagement specialists and engineers and. Uh development groups and financial experts.
General contractor.
Yeah, dinner contractor. So we're getting every perspective on this. A citizen advisory committee was established and approved by the council. That's a twelve-member committee, uh representative representative of the entire city, so there's. Two members from each council district. Um plus a handful of other members. Commissioner Mills is the chair of the planning commission, is a member of that committee. Uh the previous mayor, Mike Peterson, is also a member of that committee. Uh have a full list. Randy Whitehead's here. He's on it um.
Latest, it's in the latest Cottonwood Heights newsletter.
So, yeah, a great group of people. Uh we're really excited to get that process started. That first committee meeting, we're we're in the process of juggling people's calendars and trying to schedule that. Which is always an exercise, but we're shooting for the next two to three weeks just to kick that off. And then some public outreach and surveys, just preliminary. Hey, city, be aware of this. Here's a project webpage. Check this often kind of thing to just get everyone thinking about this site as we begin to um. Start this process.
I would love any input, all input from you guys individually, so. Give me your two cents about what you'd like to see over there.
Uh Ferguson Park, this is the the new off-leash uh dog park and parking lot that opened. Um right off of Wausatch Boulevard, access on Prospector Drive. This is done. Um. I don't know that the planning commission really dealt a whole lot with this one as it came through the the. Kind of a site design process, but certainly a a big accomplishment to open a new park in the city. So that that opened September twenty-sixth. It was a a a real effort by multiple city councils involved over many years. A ton of staff. Sam's name is on the plaque. She did a great job. So, yeah, it was a real effort. Really exciting to see that.
Congrats. Yeah, thanks to past council members. Grateful to.
Lots lots of people.
Uh the Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail, we recently finished um installing mile markers, uh new wayfinding signs and some trail signage there to just kind of refresh. The signs that were out there. Uh we also did some striping on the trail. You can kind of see the. On this top right, we did that kind of striping in more places than it was before. Gives it more of a trail feel and then reconstructed portions of that trail that were really damaged through the. That corporate center office area. This ties really nicely into the new Knutson Park now in Holiday and some of these wayfinding signs here are actually. At the the front of that park. So as you park at Knutson Park, you see the wayfinding signs that directs you through the whole thing.
We plan to do an event in the spring with Holiday to kind of unveil this and invite people to come and walk it. I mean, you can walk it at any point, but we thought the spring would be a great time to invite folks out.
General plan update, um. This is very high level, but internal coordination i- is taking place now with some of these big projects, trails and parks and and, you know, sensitive lands ordinances out of the way now. We're really gonna start focusing on the general plan and and getting that to a point where we can bring it back for consideration, additional public input and get that moving. Um so we think we'll be introducing that to the planning mission in the wider public, probably late twenty twenty-three. The form-based code, as as Sam mentioned earlier, is part of the general plan project. It's funded under the same, they're they're different projects, but they were funded with the same. Funding source and grant. So the form-based code, as you know, is ongoing. We're in the middle of reviewing that with you now.
Read your draft.
Uh Doverhill Drive, um this is right across the street, across Wausatch Boulevard from the from Ferguson Park. Um I I think a lot of you are aware of this, but this is the the old church meeting house property that was surplus. Um a handful of lots were sold off to Ivory Homes. They've entitled it for thirteen single-family lots. The first phase of that, which is the four lots, you can kind of see on the left side of the picture there. That um subdivision phase has been approved, so all the site work is on underway on that side. The nine lots on the east side are in review right now. And then the two-acre park in the middle is 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 going to be a city uh public park. The city acquired that land as part of this deal. And then Ivory Homes um is constructing that park. Per a development agreement with the city.
Is that is that park, uh are we having staff members regularly going out there? Just to monitor the grading? Is it's, I mean, I've had.
They.
Concern from residents that they're not. There are things that are happening that are different than what. Was released to the public in the last iteration. I don't know if that.
Yeah, I would push back against that. I think we've been pretty hands-on on making sure when there are concerns, we investigate them.
Okay.
There's a development agreement that's very enforceable that's in place and all parties are well aware. Um and then the the park must be complete within two years of the start of phase one, so that clock has started now. So we should see development in the park start to happen. Uh East Jordan Canal Trail feasibility study. This will come to you at some point, but it's uh just kind of getting underway. This is a study to look at. Opportunities, constraints, possibilities for expanding the the paved portion of the East Jordan Canal Trail. A little green highlight on the screen is where it is now. It kind of runs from. The the Park Center Drive intersection there. Um behind the little psychic house there. Um it runs to the back of Mount View Park. The trail right now is is built on the paved or on the the covered portion of the canal. Moving farther to the north, it it daylights and there's a whole set of issues to work through there. So we got grant funding to study that. What are the constraints? What would it take? To to expand all this. This is not a trail construction study. This isn't even a trail master plan. This is just a an analysis of if we want to expand this trail. Here's some things, here's some hurdles, here's some challenges, here's some opportunities to connect this in with other regional trail systems. Um so so that's underway.
Does the scope of that basically through Greenfield Way?
For the East Jordan Canal Trail, yeah, the canal ends and crosses I two fifteen on that little. Figure there. The study, though, will look at, okay, once we get to there, can we connect into Highland Drive? Can we connect into any other trail systems to get farther east? West, south, you know, across the interstate.
Just briefly, another opportunity that the feasibility study will look at is going the other direction. Farther through Park Center um and then maybe over into Midville that way, so. That it'll contemplate the pros and cons of, I think, running in different directions, which will help us.
The idea with this report is to. To iron out all the the hurdle or at least get an understanding of what it would take to build this trail and then we bring that back to the council. As they prioritize it, we seek funding and and, you know, implement from there. So this is just a step one. Other ongoing projects, uh transportation master plan, the commission recommended approval of at the last meeting. That was introduced to the council last uh last night, at last night's council meeting. So it's in that process now. It'll work its way towards uh formal consideration there. For Union Boulevard Shared Use Path and Bike Lane, this is uh. A project that connects, there there's the two uh multifamily projects that are. Across from Mount View Park on seventeen hundred East and Fort Union Boulevard. And then uh about a block to the east at Brook Hill Drive. There's two there and both of those have had to implement. Recommendations from the Fort Union Boulevard Master Plan in building. A wider sidewalk and a bike lane separated from the roadway. That was a requirement as part of their redevelopment, so those are in. But there are, they're two little islands to themselves. This grant, we got grant funding to connect the two basically. And it's it's a long, it'll be a bigger island, but it's still, it's momentary.
Surprisingly extremely expensive to build a bike lane for one block. It's hard.
And then we have numerous funding sources and I couldn't even tell you what is what for a Highland Drive shared use path as well. That will basically. It's either construction funding or planning and design funding that will take a shared use path essentially from City Hall. Down Highland Drive around the corner to Fort Union Boulevard, all the way down along Highland.
Uh almost to where that sure.
And then for that path. Yes, and then we've made application and have not heard yet on design funding to take it through the intersection and up basically to where the East Jordan Canal would come out. So you can start to see where this whole trail network can connect. Um so, you know, ongoing, but there is funding there. And then the Little Cottonwood Canyon, Bonneville Shoreline Trail. Trailhead Design. Uh this is for the, there's a twenty-six acre piece of land that the city acquired in partnership with Utah Open Lands. It's the very last property in Cottonwood Heights. Um there's like an old, people call it a jeep trail, but it's like a little dirt walking path that you see people on sometimes. Just south of the water tank there in the very southeast corner of the city. That's identified as a secondary trailhead point for a future Bonneville Shoreline Trail, so we've just. Done a a a minor design to envision what that could look like. A big reason of doing that design is if we have a design in place. When UDOT comes in and makes improvements on Wausatch Boulevard, um we can make sure that the the shared use path that they're envisioning is constructed along this parcel. So that will come to you at at some point as well, just to to get input on. It's not a a formal plan or anything. It's more just a design concept. Very high level. I'm sure I missed some stuff. Any questions before we wrap up?
So the Highland Drive shared use path. Any thought of going either south of that, down towards Creek Road?
That'd be great, and I'm sure we'll get there eventually. None of the projects so far go that way. It's all getting here down down to Fort Union.
Thanks for the update.
Yeah, thank you.
Part of, I'll throw in there, part of the appeal of doing it on that north section is that front edge stretch. Of Highland that provides kind of a an ample area of ride away that could be used to accommodate that.
I'm just thinking down the hill towards Creek Road across from where you are.
Yeah.
At the top of the hill, there's space up there.
All all of these opportunities.
Right now, it's a great opportunity to increase your speed and.
Oh, yeah.
So you can hit sixty before you hit the fence.
Gotta get through that way.
We'll get there.
Makes this makes this crazy.
That's what we have for you tonight. That was fantastic. Thank you, everybody. Um. Mr. Ebbler, any questions or comments?
No, I'm good. Um eh just just want to comment on the general plan. Late twenty twenty-three, are we thinking more November or in the December meeting?
Um I'm not thinking anything yet. I I'm just gonna say late twenty twenty-three. I've said dates before and missed them, so.
Eh and on that one is that, are we anticipating um two or three meetings before I ex- expectation of voting on it?
Yeah, that'll take a while. Yeah, as long as it needs.
Okay, thanks.
Um and let me just conclude with reporting back, um the sled ordinance passed with the city council. And um not without uh lots and lots of work from these three and. Lots and lots of input from from our citizenry and uh sometimes with very, very strong feelings about it. So I I just feel gratitude for this group. And then on behalf of the city council, just as I had a chance to report to them for ten minutes last night. They expressed their gratitude to the eight of us and the work that we're doing and. Are grateful for the collaboration and the role that we're playing. So just to pass that on for. This group, thanks for working. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
I think we just have one motion left.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion is second. All those in favor? We stand adjourned.
So next meeting will be November first. We're still since this was a two-meeting month, it's gonna feel quick to get away and then we'll be. We'll be free again and get to give you a little break.